Good afternoon and welcome to the November 25th Public Safety Legal Administration Committee. I am Andrea Boone, Chair of this committee, and to my right is the Honorable Antonio Lewis, District 12. At this time, we will have public comment. Our first speaker is Henri Jordan.
Give me my just spirit of God to everyone that's here. He that works to seek shall not dwell within my house. He that tells lies and not carry in my sight, shall not carry in my sight, Psalms 101, Chapter 7, verse. The idea king seems to the Lord. Jesus prospers life pure and administers social justice. To work deceit, to tell lies and work justice injustice, give the enemy power over you and James Griffin. How can ye believe which receive honor one of another and seek not the honor that coming from God only? John 5, Chapter 44, verse. He did not claim his own witness to himself, his works or miracles or a witness. The scripture bare witness to him. Jesus told me, I cannot work your job, your plan cannot bless like his plan. So say to them, thereof a fearful heart be strong. Fear not, behold, your God will come with vengeance. Even God with a recompense, he will come and save you, Isaiah 35, Chapter 4, verse. I will be the way of holiness. It will be the way of holiness. And it will be reserved for the ransom and redeemed of the tribulation period. Who will enter the millennial kingdom. Your way is not higher than Jesus' way. Because yours leads to destruction and his leads to life. To work for you is to ask for death. But seek ye first the kingdom of God and his righteousness, and all these things should be added unto you. Matthew 6, Chapter 33, verse. The believer is to seek first the righteousness that is characteristic of God's kingdom. And then all these things, material things, shall be added to him. When ye give yourselves to glory and not Jesus to do it, your way will not bless me or you. Thank you for letting me speak the word of Christ, because I fear the word of God and I fear... Sometimes I fear people myself, but I shouldn't fear man myself. I should fear God rather than man. Because Christ got more for me than man have, and I need what Christ have. You also need what Christ have.
Thank you. At this time, do we have any more public speakers? We have been joined by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. At this time, we will have our quarterly update by Chief Darren Sheerbaum, Atlanta Police Department. Welcome, Chief.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Hillis. As always, thank you for your service to our city by serving on the Atlanta City Council and for all you do to support safety in Atlanta. Do we have the presentation that's up today? Do you have a copy, Madam Chair? Okay. Thank you so much. It's my privilege to bring on behalf of all the officers, the investigators, supervisors, and civilian team members of the Atlanta Police Department, the quarterly report to give an overview of where we stand as it relates to the state of safety in our city. I want to start by first noting that we've entered the political season and commend the officers and civilian team members of the police department. During this last campaign, there were 41 dignitary visits to our city. Either the primary candidate, a dignitary of the party, or an individual supporting the campaign. During that time, we had 44 protests and rallies that occurred within Atlanta. Many of those had opposing groups that were present that wanted to be heard and making sure their constitutional rights were protected. During this time, personnel of the department many times had to alter their off days, worked 10- and 12-hour shifts to make sure each of those incidents went off without any major occurrences. So I do want to commend, as we get to look at the crime reductions we're going to go over with shortly, this was occurring while the department was managing these large events as we were a battleground state. So I just want to, if the officers of the department are listening, our civilian team members, thank you for what you did this summer and fall on behalf of our constitution and the political process. To give you a review of where we currently stand in crime, and this is as of the 16th of November, and you'll note in the traditional crime categories that we track, we're down in each area, Madam Chair, and members of the committee with the exception of three areas. Obviously rape, as well as larceny, other shoplifting are trending up slightly over this time last year, but we continue to see a reduction in key areas which we're focusing on. And as of this particular time, we are seeing an 8% reduction in crimes against persons across our city and a 5% reduction in property crimes. There was not a single time I stood before you last year and could report crimes being down related to vehicle thefts, Madam Chair, and members of the committee, but they are currently down 25%. And I want to thank the officers of the department, our investigators, the community members who have looked at our promotions around how can I help reduce crime using the clubs which we distribute to help in that area. Also happy to note that we're currently seeing a 9% reduction in persons shot in our city. This is the second year we've seen this reduction, and the second year we've seen a reduction around crimes against persons. Right now, all zones with the exception of two are trending down. Currently, Zone 1 is slightly up over this time last year, however, they have the second largest number over... Second least, I should say, number of Part 1 crimes in the city. They were the recipient of our crime reduction award last year. So while they are actually lower than the other four zones in relation to them preceding them, they are slightly up for this time last year, and then Zone 5 is slightly up. And on their current trend, we believe they may become back into the negative by this time at the end of the year. I want to talk about homicides. I think this is an area that we all Atlantans look to to see are we moving in the right directions, curtailing violence in the city. As you can see on the chart that's on the screen in the report that's in front of you, if you look at the four-year trend, we continue to see a noticeable reduction. This time in 2021 and 2022, there have been 145 homicides in our city. This time last year, we had 122, and then 109 when this report was generated. But here's what we're seeing that's concerning. The number of homicides that are occurring inside and the number of homicides that are committed to be domestic in nature. We cannot be in private homes and residences. We cannot be where fights break out among those that have a family relationship or some type of relationship that the law describes as being domestic in nature. That's where we do look for faith-based communities, civic organizations, families to be able to influence those. And then escalating disputes, while they are starting to decrease in being the motivator for... And the slide's not advancing. The motivator... There we go. Thank you so much. Escalating disputes, while still the number one, is starting to shrink slightly in what we're seeing. And these escalating disputes are very frustrating. We have seen individuals lose their lives over parking spaces, unpaid bills at restaurants, being slid in a line over the type of car they drive. These are very difficult circumstances for us to steer a community or an individual out of. Domestic is number two. All year long, we've reported to you, domestic has been number one in nature, and that is one we continue to need individual support on and support the mayor's initiative around the No More Campaign. This time last year, robbery was a strong number two to motivations of homicide in the city, and that is starting to drop significantly. And I really want to commend the officers that investigate those cases around domestic violence, I'm sorry, robberies in the city. As it relates to homicide clearance rate, I do want to note all that goes in for our homicides being solved. So of the 109 homicides, the time this report were generated, 82 of them had already been cleared. We identified who had committed those homicides. That is a clearance rate that far exceeds the national average at this time, 75% in Atlanta and 57% across the country. There's a few things that contribute to that. Number one is a dedicated group of investigators that go out all hours of the night, any time of the day, to be able to make sure we hold individuals accountable for homicide in our city. The next one is community support. Individuals that will speak to those investigators, individuals that will call tips into the tip line. You cannot see a clearance rate this high without members of the community being very involved across Atlanta, working with our dedicated investigators. And then the infrastructure around technology that the administration has invested in, US council members have invested in, have been key, making sure that we are able to identify the vast majority of the time who has committed a homicide in the city. So there's not another occurrence of violence, and we have closure for families. So I want to bring this to your attention today and just thank the citizens of Atlanta that support the Atlanta Police Department, officers first on scenes of calls that do an incredible job securing evidence and finding information we need, and then the investigators that bring it all home. I did note the sharp reduction in robberies in our city. This is one of the contributors for the fact that we're seeing a drop in our homicide rate and our shootings. So far this year, we have arrested 185 individuals that have committed a robbery in Atlanta, Georgia, an armed robbery, and that has helped lead to a 15% reduction in robberies this time last year, which has led to contributing of the homicide going down. Burglaries is one area. I mentioned the three areas we're seeing uptick in is that we still see increase over this time last year despite the fact of arresting 222 burglars. We still see a slight uptick, and it's happening in three primary areas which prevention can help in. As we see new homes being constructed all across the city, as we see homes renovated, we're noticing thefts around installation of new appliances that may be occurring or installation of the copper infrastructure. Our crime prevention inspectors are willing to meet anyone at any time to walk through new developments to give best practice of securing those, the installation of cameras, hiring a private security will help in those areas, construction sites being targeted, and then as well as our storage units in the city. Those are the three areas that we've seen the increase that has contributed to this 3% up across Atlanta. Another area that we've been reporting on and taking action on is the airport auto thefts. Despite the fact that auto thefts are down 25% inside the city proper, we have seen an increase down at the airport. And this is fitting along a national trend that's being seen coast to coast. And I don't know if any car thieves watch PSLA, Madam Chair, but I'm going to put them on notice now that we're removing the welcome mat at our airport for you to believe you can come and take vehicles. There's over 40,000 parking spaces in Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson International Airport. Some citizens may travel and it may be days or even weeks before they know they've been a victim of a theft. When we look from California to Connecticut, we see an increase at almost every major American airport of thefts. We've taken a number of initiatives to turn this trend around. While the thefts are decreasing significantly on the curbs, it is in the parking decks, the four main parking decks that we've seen the increase. Working closely with the general manager at the airport, new anti-tailgating technology is being installed, so those individuals that come in to take a car can't follow the vehicle they've just stolen out. Additional security officers are being deployed in the decks as well as additional officers being deployed in that area. We're working with undercover officers to patrol the decks. We also have addition of motorcycle units in those decks as well as training 25 officers to be able to deploy special equipment to stop a vehicle that is being stolen. It's also very apparent that these thefts tend to be highly organized and even done on a national scale. And so we're working with the Federal Bureau of Investigation here at the Atlanta Field Office on a number of high-level investigations to identify those that are stealing vehicles from the airport and hold them accountable. What we can see is that the majority of the thefts are programmer-related. And I believe we gave at the last PSLA committee meeting, we showed you an example of one of those programmers, where you're able to go up to a car, simulate the key fob, and then just take the vehicle. No broken glass, nothing that draws the attention of a police officer on patrol. And so we do encourage everyone, as we were able to turn around the trend of Kias and Hyandes being stolen in the city last year, the club is the number one way you can prevent your vehicle from being stolen. And each of you are instrumental in helping us distribute those to your districts. We appreciate that. And we would ask anyone, as you go out to enjoy this wonderful Thanksgiving season, if you do drive to the airport, please use a club to secure your vehicle. And even though over 40,000 parking spaces, a small number with thefts, we want to make sure you don't fall into that area. I want to focus on the three areas. When we look at almost a 20% reduction in homicides for the second year in a row and a 9% reduction in persons shots and robberies, there's three key contributors that we have control over. So do many others. People that are operating youth centers, people that are helping in employment opportunities, that is all contributing to the reduction in crime in our city. But gangs, guns, and drugs is where you would expect your police department to be driving down what we have influence over. So far this year, your police department has shut down 62 drug dealing operations in the city. These are locations where we get tips from the community that are concerned about something that's going on on their street, next door, or close by. And citizens are right to be concerned when they see that. If you allow a drug dealing operation to continue, there's likely to be violence there. Someone comes for the cash, or someone comes for the drugs. You will note this year that 62 times officers of your department has went through a door. Many times, that side of that door is a heavily armed group of individuals. During this time, we've arrested 94 drug dealers and we've seized 118 weapons out of homes. If you look at what is on your presentation, that one table is weapons taken out of one home of Atlanta, Georgia. That had the police department not gone in that area, thanks to a community tip, those guns could easily be used to protect the drug trade or further the drug trade. And those guns cannot be discharged in a park of the city or a street of the city. So far, your investigators and members of the department, and while shutting down the 62 drug dealing locations, have seized $238,000 in cash, taken $4.2 million worth of drug street value off the street. So I do want to commend them, members of the committee, for the work that's being done. And a lot of this does come from community tips. So we want Atlantans to continue to report suspicious activity in their areas. We will come, and if legally possible, we will shut that down. I want to continue to talk on our effort to curtail the drug influence that's present in Georgia and across the region. During the summer, we conducted Operation Heat Wave, which led to 103 targeted arrests, 19 documented gang members arrested, and 45 firearms that were taken off the street. These targeted details is done with a coalition of our federal, state, and regional partners. We go after individuals that we have warrants, we believe have a clivity to create violence in our city and in areas that you may be seeing violence in your districts. We started that back for our fall/winter rendition, Operation Deep Freeze. And already, we've had successful details. We've taken seven convicted felons, felons rather, off the street, recovered nine guns, and arrested eight gang members. We do this in conjunction with the agencies you see on your chart. And I want to thank everyone from the Fulton County Sheriff, the Georgia State Patrol, the GBI, the FBI, the US Attorney's Office, the ATF that works with us, keeping the city safe. And then finally, speaking about the gun recoveries and the gangs, guns, and drugs. 2,853 guns that have been removed from the city street in a variety of areas. This particular here, you will see the high-capacity weapons that were removed just a few blocks from this facility. At 294 Walker Street, these guns removed as part of a drug dealing operation that was shut down. All the work of the officers, the investigators, the civilian members of our department to continue to work along with your initiatives around youth, the mayor's initiatives around youth, your employment, your initiatives around supporting your various initiatives in your districts to keep Atlanta safe. The holiday plan is upon us. It is that time of year where we have Thanksgiving and then holidays in December. We will, starting on the 25th of this week through January 6th, run our holiday crime reduction plan. This has us in shopping centers across the city, areas that we know that Atlantans gather to celebrate this time of year. We also want everyone to be very mindful not to leave packages in your car. Please remember the Clean Car Campaign. Also, please very mindful of any packages being delivered to your home. We do not want the Grinch to take any packages off your porch, so have those delivered only when you're home. Have someone there to pick it up, or work closely with the business in your community to have those delivered during those times. We're happy to report that our pilot program for our CARES unit is highly successful. And so we would anticipate asking for additional positions in the budget. I know Councilmember Lewis, you are interested in seeing that to come to your district. And we want to see this next year in 2025 to go to every district. Right now, it is primarily in 5 and 2. Those were the zones that had the highest type of calls we felt this would be effective in. And so we are in our pilot program since July the 11th. When we started our CARES unit program, those officers, those civilian team members have responded to 1,862 calls for service and completed 1,294 reports that allowed officers that were sworn to remain on patrol or to go to higher priority calls. We are hiring that area. We still have slots that can be filled, and we anticipate moving additional in that area. So we ask you to continue to promote that at your various job fairs when you have members of your district come forward, want to serve in the city. If maybe the sworn side isn't what they want to do, the CARES unit is a great way, a great way to be able to serve and protect the citizens here in the city. I want to thank you all, and I want to certainly thank Mayor Dickens and the administration for the efforts that had been underway to support those that serve within the Atlanta Police Department. This is around facility upgrades. This is around the training center. This is around pension, and this is around pay. And we're starting to see an improvement in the numbers of recruitment in that area. Once we posted the new pay scale on our website, we immediately saw an 11% increase in the number of applications that came in off of that. And so far this year, we have onboarded 168 new sworn members of the department. We have 20 that are slated onboard in the next few days. That will put us back over the 1,700 mark as the number of sworn officers on the department, moving in the right direction. But a key component of what we do to keep Atlanta safe is our civilian team members, whose talent we continue to grow. And we have 510 professional staff that we have on the department. 153 of those serve in our 911 Center, and we continue to hire there as well. We've onboarded 39 new E911 team members this year with three others scheduled to onboard. And I just want to acknowledge the civilian team members. A lot of times, we see the officers, they have the body worn cameras, we see them out. But those that process crime scenes, those that work in our central records unit to make sure citizens get accurate reports for insurance claims, those are just as vital as our 1,700 officers. So I want to commend the 510 civilian team members. Very soon, we're going to be opening our Very soon, we're going to be opening our new recruitment center. You remember, right next to Public Safety Headquarters, we used to have a credit union. Well, we're going to be bringing more treasure, if you will, into the organization by having that to be a recruitment hub right there on Prior Street. That will allow us to bring civilians and sworn's into the police department. That will be in addition to the 100-plus career fairs and events we hold each year to continue to grow the Atlanta Police Department back. And please tout that in any district event that you may have. And I'm also pleased to report that over this time last, the last year, we've seen our attrition on the department decrease by 29%, which is encouraging as we support those, due to the difficult but very rewarding work of protecting Atlanta, Georgia. As you know, when the mayor took office and you all started your terms that you're in now, 70% of the fleet of the Atlanta Police Department was past lifecycle. And we had many times that we had more individuals standing in roll call than we had vehicles to place them in. Thanks to the administration, your support of the administration, we have now dispersed 544 new vehicles throughout the city. You see there the yearly breakdown. Many of those are going to our Take Home Car Program, which we believe you see in your neighborhood, and we continue to build out the department. We have a number of way to go to get everyone in field operations to take home vehicle, but we're moving in that direction. We saw that was important particularly when we had the most recent threat of a hurricane, tropical storm hitting our city, and how vital it was going to be that officers in Atlanta had vehicles that they could respond to should there be widespread destruction that prevented a proper shift change of personnel inside the city. To give you an update on the Public Safety Training Center, we are slated to begin the move-in process next month. A few photographs here for you. You see the campus coming along nicely with our academic and leadership building that is almost done. There, that is where we'll have the majority of our classrooms, our simulators, the ability to teach less-than-lethal de-escalation training in those spaces. Our wellness center for all of our first responders will be there, the Career Development Center, and the Community Engagement Space. That can be used by all Atlantans from all 245 of our neighborhoods. You see the rescue tower and the new training fire station that is almost done there in our new mounted patrol. It's very important that we hear from the members of the committee and the city council to see their officers present in the parks. And so we are glad to have our mounted patrol almost ready to have a new home that will replace the one that is in Grant Park. Throughout this quarter and throughout the summer, we've been heavily engaged across the city in all six zones. So far this year, we have done community engagement initiatives in every six zones, such as baskets and badges in Zone 6, BBQ&amp;A in Zone 3, pancakes and pride in Zone 4, chat and chew in Zone 4. Madam Chair, we were also rolling with the patrol in Zones 1 and 4 in your district as well. So we're trying to be all throughout the city. We don't want individuals to know their police department only through a moment of crisis. And so 237 events so far this year in Atlanta with youth engagement and other engagement as well. As we prepared for Halloween, we were mindful of all the number of children that would be out in our city trick-or-treating. So we did a discussion in the schools around trick-or-treating safety. Our PAL participated with DPW on the touch of truck in Rodney Cook Park and making sure our officers were out in all neighborhoods patrolling with their blue lights on to make sure we had a safe event that we called Halloween. And then if you are a boxing fan, I know many members of our council are there, this year, we do something a little bit different. Normally, it's the police department versus the fire department as we raise money for our two PAL centers. This fall, we're going to do Atlanta versus New York City. And this will be firefighters and police officers from New York City that will be challenging firefighters and police officers here in Atlanta, Georgia. So tickets are for sale. We look forward to seeing you on December the 11th, which is a Wednesday, which will be at the Tabernacle in Zone 5. So if you want to find another way to fight crime, make Atlanta safe, please think about our PAL centers. And finally, Madam Chair, before I open up for questions, we want to remind Atlantans they can be a key partner in fighting crime in the city by integrating as well as registering their cameras. We currently have 21,000 registered cameras, 20,000 integrated cameras that help us solve crime quickly, do virtual patrols, and anyone that wants to enjoy their city does so with a strong safety network behind them. Ma'am, that is your report out for you and the committee for the quarterly. Open for any questions that you or members of the committee may have.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we will hear from members of our committee. The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
Chief, thank you for this report. A lot of work you all are actually doing right now, so I truly appreciate this. I went through a few pages, and I know I've been talking about Sparky. I don't know if you know who Sparky is. Sparky is the Night Scope's autonomous surveillance robot that's on Boulevard. And when we are looking at the airport, we're looking at some of the stolen cars. And I'm hopeful that we aren't going to put our officers, I'm hopeful that we're thinking of different ways to actually attack this, throwing different spaghetti on the wall for this, because I don't want our officers to be looked at as security guards at the airport when we have different technologies that they're using in different cities. So have you all started to look at ways in which we could get things like Sparky?
Yes, sir. I believe Deputy Chief Smith, when he gave his quarterly report, brought back your desire to look at that. The department has started researching what technology is available on mobile robots to be able to provide another level of security, visibility, capturing video that may be of interest, and just to be a deterrent to crime altogether. So give us a little bit to fully vet it. We do know some venues such as the aquarium, we believe have robots in their parking decks. We do know the Cobb County Sheriff's Department has recently rolled out a pilot. So we are not opposed to anything that keeps the city safe and makes us a trusted organization. So we will hopefully stand here next quarter, give you some update on what that research is looking like.
Yeah, I appreciate you. And I think I'm on it even more now because Cobb County is doing an amazing job. And I'm able to look at some of their stats, their convictions, their conviction rate is extremely high when it comes to like some of the stuff. So if we can, I don't want to let them outdo us when it comes to technology. I want to be the number one when it comes to technology with public safety as much as we can, because I know we're still trying to hit the 2,000 number, right?
Correct, sir.
So I don't think we're ever going to hit it. And if we're not going to hit it, because we've never hit it. And so since we aren't, I think it's pie in the sky, and I think that we should stop throwing that spaghetti on the wall and throw new spaghetti on the wall, which could be aimed toward having the best in technology when it comes to law enforcement. And so Sparky, New York is doing it, you just said Cobb County is doing it. And we know that the business owners who have their own money, private businesses, they're doing it. And so with the Atlanta Airport, understand the funding, the APD has more money than Cobb County Police Department, cities in Cobb County Police Departments. And so I would like for us to be doing the same thing and not be moving as, I want us to move at light speed with it. Because you say, when you're looking at the Atlanta Airport, the funding that comes in at the airport for security, that's a button if we can. I don't, so if we can, please look at Sparky for the Atlanta Airport stolen cars as well. Another thing I want to talk about was the police cars. Amazing that we've been, as a council, we've been making sure we allocate every single dollar to make sure that APD gets the resources that it needs. We've made sure we support as much as possible. So the police cars is the amazing thing to know we have 544 now total dispersed. If we can send back out to the public or to police officers to ride with their steel blues on at night in Zone 3, District 12, I've gotten a couple of reports of police officers, and I've seen them myself, not riding with their steel blues on at night. And if we have, if their car is accessible to that, if they're one of these 544, can you please send out a letter to police to make sure they're doing this? Because it's a way to deter crime, it's a way to stop as much police and people interaction. And I think when people see police riding with their blue lights on, they feel safer because they can stop a police officer. So if we can, please ask and request police officers to turn back on their blue lights at night. That's a legislation we passed here as a council. On the homicide information, I've had a family reach out to me specifically about, a friend of mine I grew up with, he was murdered since I've been elected, name is Christian McMiller. Christian McMiller, he was murdered on 166. And I think there was some trolling of people. So there's so much on social media about this murder, and his family's reaching out. So if there's any kind of way we can close that one, because I love our 75% closure rate, you and I, we've worked on, we keep in contact when it comes to murders in District 12. One of the first murders in District 12 was Christian McMiller. And another young man, I don't know his full, his real name, but I know his name, Biggs, if his family's listening. They were murdered on the highway, and I would like to close those two as well.
The councilmen are all looking to each of those, see what our update is on it, and we'll make sure.
Okay.
Back out to the family as well.
Please do, please do. I also want to say thank you to our officers who've been on the ground taking care of us. I've been able to talk about the candidate visits and constitutional protection. I've been able to see all these rallies and protests go through and the 41th Amendmentary visits go through and not a hatch, not an issue happen. And so I do say I appreciate folks for doing their job when it comes to that, and I appreciate folks protecting the city of Atlanta. But the things that we're talking about, if we can, try to get those done. Thank you again, Chair. I don't know if our chair's going to ask, but is there, she's asked this before. So we have a family here right now, the Anderson family, and they've been coming for a while. And for the first time, I think that they've been here in a while that you're here at the same time. And so I want to know if there's any updates or anything from GBI, because we, every single week, we ask if we can take something back. And you being the chief, the top police officer in the city of Atlanta, no better person to get it from than from you, because we assume that when it comes, when the question's that the Anderson family's asking us, we immediately ask the representative from the police department. So we assume he tells you and you ask the GBI. And so are there any updates for the Anderson family?
And my, I always want to acknowledge the Anderson family, particularly as we approach the holiday season. I have extended my condolences before, and that certainly remains, and they remain in my prayer. I did speak to the director of the GBI and expressed to him the desire of the family to be kept updated when new information is known. He did commit to me that they would do that as soon as they're able to do so. No information's been given to us, Councilmember Lewis. We are not part of the investigation that is occurring by a matter which is the GBI in South Fulton County. I do know it's slated to go to the District Attorney of Fulton County in the near future. As of two weeks ago, it had not gone to the District Attorney. As you know, we are in a pause mode until additional information is made available. So we know what the next move is for the Atlanta Police Department. And so once that's released, then we'll be able to move appropriately.
Thank you. And I think what would make us feel even more, I appreciate you for that statement. I think what even, because we're going to keep stacking on things to make people feel as comfortable as possible. But what I would like to know is if you can, if you communicate with the GBI via phone or via email?
Through phone. It was a phone call, sir.
Well, if you can send an email request, because I understand request and writing are a little bit different than answers. So if you can send an email request, that way the family knows that it happened, because I hope this family is doing open record requests, I mean, that they understand these things, because they want to know that we are doing certain things. So if you can send something in writing to the person, because I understand the phone conversation, but they can also say that it never happened. And they also, the family has been requesting the GBI call them and give them some updates. Is there any update on that?
No, sir. This is the Atlanta Police Department, and so this is being done exclusively by the Georgia Bureau of Investigation.
So, and if possible, if we can send an email to the GBI and ask if they can reach out to the family, because we heard in the last public safety meeting from, I don't want to be wrong about the representative from the police department's name, so I won't say her name, but the representative actually told us that he would, that GBI reaches out to families. And so this family said they haven't been reached out to. So if possible, if you can send it to them in writing, so we know that they received a request from APD to communicate with the family. Thank you.
Next, the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis.
Thank you, Chairwoman Boone. Thank you, Chief, for the presentation. Just a couple of quick questions. I know we're only about four months in, but looking at the, what looks like success of the CARES unit, what is the expansion plan right now, if there is one? Or is it something we're going to look at at the beginning of next year? Are we going to wait until the FY '26 budget? Or what is the plan there?
Certainly, the plan is, as we get into the new budget years, ask for additional positions so we can put them in every zone. And so the goal is to start hiring in that position. As we have individuals that for a variety of reasons can't complete the standard training for the academy, but we believe bring value to the organization, we're looking to transfer them from the sworn positions into CARES units. That's how we've been able to grow up so quickly, instead of just to hire us from the ground up. So our goal is to have CARES represented in every single zone, starting in July of next year when we get the new budget in place.
And you may not know where I'm at, because it's an issue specific to my district, but what's the status of establishing the, I guess what your APD calls the touchdown station at the Works?
Could you shoot an update on that, sir? I know as Deems reported back, it's very close, but I'll get you a timeframe, and we'll be open as we speak to the Works.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for what you all have done in the space of Lynn Hurst and ML King. We do see some improvement there at Lynn Hurst and ML King, but we still have a ways to go with that. I see Director Tally in the back. Director, thank you for what you have done at Lynn Hurst and ML King. However, the fence, the fencing there is the major problem at the Lynn Hurst and ML King site. If we could do just a little bit more additional enforcement, I believe that we can help the quality of life in that community and get the citizens that are there day and night, get them some support. And also, we have seen improvement at Bakers Ferry and ML King. So we'd like to thank Major Clay for all of his dedication and diligence to that very source spot at the Kentucky Fried Chicken. His work has not gone unnoticed. Thank you all so much. Do we have any other questions or concerns? The Honorable Antonio Lewis.
And going to Councilmember Hillis, I appreciate you for bringing up the CARES unit page. The one thing I wanted to bring to it was, is this a map of the city of Atlanta?
It is, sir.
All right. So when I'm looking at the map of the city of Atlanta, I understand that the bottom part is District 12. And the CARES unit, it seems, you said two and five?
That's the pilot program, yes, sir.
So those are the same two districts that the, well, Pad started in five and then two or six?
Five and six, sir.
Okay, so if you're looking at the coverage area, how is it that two and five were chosen? Why, how did we choose the areas that we chose? Because this cover area, coverage area looks, District 12 is overlapping all over.
Certainly. So we look at two areas. What kind of calls will the CARES unit be going to? Which is car accidents, private property accidents, trees and power lines down. The two areas of the city that had the highest grouping of those calls was Zones 5 and 2. So that was the determinations. Had Zones 3 and 6 or had Zones 4 and 6 had the higher ones, that's where the pilot would have went. So for us to be able to know more quickly whether the pilot would be effective, whether CARES was a good model for the city, we went to the area that had the highest number of calls that aligned with what their mission would be.
And I'm even, well, maybe the map isn't printed up right, or maybe it could look a little different. Because I'm looking at this map, and even if I look at it, it's, all this is 12, and this is 5, and that's 2. So there's so many gaps in the other spaces. And the same questions I asked Pad when they first came, I know they were focused in one area. And what do I have to do to get, because if you look at it, if this map to be true, a true imitation of the city of Atlanta, this is 12, and what do I have to do to be in the next, to guarantee I'm in the next pilot program? Because it seems like we have more than two and, maybe combined two and five.
Certainly. The next year, when we go into the budget, it's going to be across to all zones, will no longer be a pilot program, it'd be an expansion. The reason District 12 is not included, they had the lower number of car accidents. The car accidents were clustered in 5 and 2, which is where we're sending the officers to, the CARES officers to.
So it's mainly car accidents?
Car accidents, private property, car accidents, roadway, street obstructions.
So what are the other yellow things? Because 12 has more than every, so if we don't have car accidents, why are we doubling down everything else?
So that is where they have been dispatched up until this point, sir.
So they're dispatching them more in 12 and they're not in 12?
Yes, sir. It's five and six, Zones 5 and 6 is where they're being dispatched to. Two and five, apologies. My apologies, two and fives were being dispatched. If you see anything in District 12, it may have been because on that particular day, resources were deployed into that area. Thanks, Chief.
Are you clear, Councilmember?
So we, so this is the map of the entire city according to?
That is Atlanta, sir. And then we've given you a snapshot of where CARES has been dispatched so far this year[1745.83] And then we've given you a snapshot of where CARES has been dispatched so far this year since July the 11th.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief, for that very well-done report. Again, please let Major Clay know that we really appreciate what he is doing. That's a very sore spot for that community and we really appreciate it. Again, thank you very much and to your wonderful staff. We appreciate your hard work and dedication. Very well done.
Thank you. Thank you, all three. Have to have to Thanksgiving.
At this time, we would like to recognize Mr. Reed, who's from the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. We also have Kenneth Days, who we will hear shortly, our public defender, and Reverend Eric Thomas, who is the senior pastor of St. Peter Missionary Baptist Church, just opened a brand-new grocery store, Nourish &amp; Bloom, at his church located on Venetian Drive for that community. So thank you, Pastor Thomas, for being with us today. At this time, we will reopen our public comment portion of this meeting. The time scheduled for this meeting advertised at 1:00 PM. We will now open that back up because many of our community members were not aware of the time change because of our Thanksgiving holiday. At this time, we will hear from Ms. Anderson. Ms. Anderson, please come forward.
Good afternoon. Councilwoman Lewis, thank you.
How many minutes do we have for Ms. Anderson? Do we know? Six. Ms. Anderson, six minutes. Thank you. Please proceed.
Okay. Yeah, good afternoon. Thanks, Councilwoman Lewis, for trying to get an update for me. But I just wanted to state that I did hear from GBI on Friday. But how I heard from GBI is upsetting to me because the Chief of Police, when I was here first, when I started coming here, when my son got murdered by Melvin Potter, Ms. Boone asked him if he was going to have someone reach it out to me. I did meet him that day for the first time. He did offer his condolences and he did graciously speak with me. But at the same time, he did turn to me and say, somebody was going to reach out to me. That has been August. Been August. That hasn't happened. If Mr. Barnes was here, he asked Jason Smith if it was customary for GBI to reach out to the family. He said yes. That hasn't happened. So I went to the Atlanta City Review Board. That was, I was, that was Tuesday last week or whenever, and that meeting was on Thursday. And I was there and I, and I said what I had to say. I met someone named Brian Fleming, an investigative manager there, who gave me this card and told me to call him Friday and after 1:00. And I did. He gave me some numbers to call, which I did call. And the numbers that he gave me wasn't the right numbers to call, but, you know, they told me that the numbers wasn't right. So Officer Calvin Thomas, I'm going to give all the credit to, all of it, because he answered the phone. And I explained to him my situation and he was like, no one? I said, no one. No one. So he said to me, he gave me this number and the number he called me sent me back to where I started. So he said, call him back if I don't get any answers. So I did call him back and he said, no, I'm, I'm, I'm going to have to find you some answers. So when he, when I did call him, he said, if I don't hear anything by Wednesday, to call him back. I called him back and I, by Wednesday, and I said, I haven't heard anything. He left a message on my phone telling me that somebody's going to reach out to me by Friday. Now, the chief said, we, Ms. Boone from August, nothing happened. Jason Smith said two weeks ago, some, that didn't happen. How does Detective Calvin Thomas get the GBI Joe Clark to call me by Friday? By Friday? Friday, Detective Calvin Thomas had the GBI Joe Clark call me by Friday last week. I had a talk with him. What was discussed, I'm not going to discuss. Okay? So am I supposed to have any confidence in anything they say? No disrespect, but I don't have any confidence. I don't. Because if it take a detective that they're over to make sure, give me enough respect to make it happen, to call me, pick the phone up and call me. Detective Lewis have, I mean, Thomas have all my respect, all of it. And I just want the council to know this. Detective Calvin Thomas. So when they appear grandstanding for you all, I'm not impressed at all. Because Melvin Potter murdered my son. That's it. It has more than enough information for APD to do their job. South Fulton to do their job. Okay? There's enough information out here for them to do their job. And they're not doing it. I, I still believe, like I said before, they're covering for one of the own because Atlanta City Review Board started this here. And Detective Calvin Thomas finished it. When I'm coming here, all this time, practically feel like I'm begging for answers that I got in a couple of days. I mean, how shameful is that? How shameful is that? To me, it's very shameful. Disrespectful and all, and everything that comes, it is. It is. So again, all this grandstanding, it doesn't mean anything to me. Because August 5th, Melvin Potter murdered my son. Melvin Potter murdered my son on August 5th. So now that I spoke with the GBI and Joe Clark said what he got to say, it's time for it, the Atlanta Police Department to step up, for South Fulton County to step up. Just like how I wanted answers from them, I want answers from APD and I want answers from South Fulton County, since all I'm hearing is about the jurisdictions. I want answers. Why Melvin Potter murdered my son? So I'm away, so I'm, I'm going to wait and see how long now we going into trying to get answers from APD and South Fulton, how long that's going to take? Because I had to wait three months. I had to wait three months to have a conversation with the GBI. Three months. So I'm going to see how long it's going to take for APD to get in touch with me, for South Fulton, because I have no confidence in that either. I don't know if by chance, if I go back to the Atlanta Citizens Review Board, who showed me compassion. And so I'm saying, it's a difference. It's a big difference. And I wanted them to know, I, I really appreciate they started this ball rolling for me. Again, like I said, his name is Brian Fleming. Brian Fleming. So, but I'm not here to beg anymore. I'm not here to feel like that's what I have to do. Because if your title means everything to you all, I'm not impressed by that either. Because you know what? My title is simply mother. Mom. That's my title. Proud of it. Mom to Devon S. Anderson Jr. That's my title. So if you're all impressed with your title, so be it. But as I've always stated, I'm going to say before, before I leave, I'm not going anywhere till I get justice for my son. My son was murdered by a lawless police officer because right now, like I stated before, the law is for the lawless. They had a situation up there in the same parking lot that my son got killed. Deputy Sheriff Thomas and his wife got arrested. What, what kind of craziness is, isn't the police, don't the police have a code of conduct? How him and his wife got arrested and he got arrested for a charge for unlawful drunkenness because they smell alcohol in his breath?
Ms. Anderson, you are 2 minutes and 50 seconds over. We must go to our next speaker at this time.
Okay, great. Yes. But I just wanted stated that the law is for the lawless. So I thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Devon Barrington Ward.
Good afternoon, members of the Committee on Public Safety and Legal Affairs. What I have in circulation, please, and I would also like a response from the legal department, is a resolution from this city council, draft resolution that I hope a member of this committee or a member of the city council will introduce compelling the mayor and the police chief to launch its administrative investigation into Melvin Potter, the officer in question in the shooting of Devon Anderson, so that we can move forward with an investigation that I believe will show that he is not only not fit for duty, but he is not fit for employment with the city of Atlanta. I want to make one thing very clear because I feel like folks have tried to conflate what we have been asking for. We are very clear that the city of Atlanta has no jurisdiction over the murder investigation into what took place with Devon Anderson. Where they do have jurisdiction, however, is the administrative investigation as it pertains to Mr. Potter's employment with the city of Atlanta. While we understand that he has been relieved of duty, he is still considered an employee with the city of Atlanta and drawing a salary with the city of Atlanta. We believe that to be unacceptable. I stepped out a moment ago to speak with the chief, to which he could not provide me an exact answer in city code that requires for them to wait for the GBI investigation in order to launch the administrative investigation into Mr. Potter's employment. Let's be very clear. This is not a situation like what took place with the police officers who killed Rashad Brooks in 2020. This police officer has a documented history of misconduct. This police officer has a documented history of having been investigated by Internal Affairs for allegations of domestic violence. This police officer indeed was on probation when he engaged in the shooting and also violated his probation by refusing the breathalyzer test. And we have seen no accountability. We have seen no punishment. We have seen no administrative investigation. So I need a very clear answer from the legal department as to why APD is not allowed to engage in an administrative investigation until the conclusion of the GBI investigation. That question has not been answered and I need the legal affairs department, the legal, the law department for the city of Atlanta to provide a very clear explanation, preferably in writing, as to stating as to why the city of Atlanta Police Department is entitled to forego or wait an administrative investigation until the GBI wraps up their criminal investigation. These are two separate entities. Because even if you take the murder charge off the table, the behavior of Officer Potter is outrageous. Let us remind you, we are here because this police officer prior to the murder of Devon Anderson engaged in lawless activity, as Ms. Anderson stated. Lawless activity, including driving over 100 miles per hour drunk with his service weapon on the seat. Lawless activity and unethical activity, including trying to use his badge to forego the arrest for the DUI charge that he received lawfully. Lawless behavior, like engaging in this activity and refusing the breathalyzer test after he is well aware that he is on probation and a part of his probation is that he is not to be drinking. And so I need an explanation from the law department as to what prevents, in city code or in APD policy, prevents APD from engaging in their administrative investigation, and I would say their administrative duty, into whether or not this police officer is fit to serve the city of Atlanta. Because it doesn't take a genius. It doesn't take the top detective to figure out or investigator to figure out that the behavior of Mr. Potter is unacceptable, it is lawless, it is murderous, and he has no place within the Atlanta Police Department. So I would like members of this committee to ask the law department that exact question. What is preventing APD from engaging in the administrative investigation at the conclusion of GBI's investigation if they are two separate entities and two separate matters? Outside of the murder charge that GBI is investigating, we're talking about obstruction of justice, we're talking about the previous DUI charges, we're talking about the probation violation, we're talking about the allegations of domestic violence against another police officer within the Atlanta Police Department. I believe that we all deserve an answer to that question and I would like to receive that. Thank you.
Do we have any more public speakers at this time? We will now have a report. Mr. Stephen Wadley.
Antonio, Dustin, you were both here earlier when your colleague Marcy was discussing, I believe, a transportation project. Marcy was saying, you know, how can it be that you don't have to input this information before you go to the next page? There should be a technological solution that it is not possible for certain information to be missing. Seeing the way that Marcy got emotional and was actually into, you know, that exchange and trying to hold somebody accountable for what they were doing was very striking for me to observe as I had gotten here an hour early by mistake. But it, I was happy to receive that education because it's, oh, this is a situation where the council member is going to be firm and actually seek an answer. And this is a situation, maybe it also is a little bit different with the power dynamic that's on display. Because the person who was over here, you know, did a bad job with their contract or whatever it was, I didn't really get the details, you know, this person was being held accountable. The same way that, I mean, Andrea and Dustin and Antonio, I mean, I think that the power relationship probably maybe between you and Chief Sheerbaum is different. Who, I don't, who knows, you know, officially, the, the chief of police should be under the jurisdiction of the city of Atlanta. But I think that Ms. Anderson is very eloquent when she says that law is for the lawless. And for those of us who are on the outside looking in, we have no idea how these bureaucracies function. And so we are asked to put our trust in institutions. You just heard, you know, Chief Sheerbaum talking about how he's interested in doing things that serve public safety and serve trust in the Atlanta Police Department. Well, if a member of the Atlanta Police Department kills somebody, you know, it would, I think, drive trust in the institution of said police department for it to cut ties and do everything that it can to show the citizens that it is sworn by law to, to protect, to reassure them, not to ask your citizens, not to ask the people that you serve to trust you when your trustworthiness could not be more in question when it comes to the most simple matter of do your deputies, do the people who are agents of your organization kill people? And if they endanger people, to what extent will they be held accountable? Especially somebody who is designated as a public servant, somebody who is allowed and given license to kill in order to, some of the citizens of this country in order to keep other ones of them safe? You know, that is where, to those whom much power is given, much is expected. And for those who have the ability to just lay out life and death, and for those of you who are officially called to have oversight and to provide legislation that, it provides a framework for all of this to happen in a way which does feed trust, there's a lot more which needs to be done. And each time that I come to see you, I'm searching for new terms to try and impress on anybody who could be listening and also on myself, that we need to be doing better because the, the issue is not just that people don't trust organizations, but that these organizations are not trustworthy and they need to be made to be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jody Williams, and we have been joined by the Honorable Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. Ms. Jody Williams, next speaker.
Good afternoon. I'm here on behalf of the homeless and safety for the homeless women and children and college students, teenagers who have jobs and are in high school and don't want to go into the system. I'm concerned about their protection while they're living on the streets. You know, what are we going to do to make them safe? You know, what are we gonna do to make them safer? Even if it's safer from the weather or anything that comes about to impede their safety? And it's been known that when, when people have jobs and are housed, crime goes down. Safety for people who are coming out of incarceration, who are living on the streets. Maybe you guys can take some of that money that the city gets for the homeless instead of giving it to the investors, you can invest in the people with that money. You know, for the longest time, the mayor has said that he's doing something with Two Peachtree Street. He's doing something for the people who are homeless, you know, to become housed, but what is he doing? Two Peachtree Street remains the same. There's nothing he's done for the homeless. He's given the money to the investors who don't help the homeless. Everything they offer them is at market value, so take some of that money and crime will go down, because these people will no longer be living on the streets looking for food to eat, a place to stay, you know, because when people don't have those things, they're gonna commit crimes, because they're survivors. Everybody don't want to be out on the streets. Most of the time I hear when people talk about helping the homeless, they say, well, you know, they're mental and they want to live out there. That's not true. I know a lot of women and children, women with five kids, you know, outside, homeless, help them to be safe. Take some of that money and spend it on the homeless people, you know, for reasons that you receive it. You say it's for the homeless, but you don't do anything for them. So start doing things for the people, so that they can see that you're on their side and they can put you back into these offices instead of, you know, trying to help take you guys out of the office. So help the homeless, stop overlooking them. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next report will be Office of the Public Defender, Kenneth Days.
Good afternoon, committee members. I'm Ken Days, the Director and Chief Public Defender for the City's Office of the Public Defender. Over this last quarter, our office has made some significant impacts in our holistic representation of clients and especially in identifying some stabilizing resources that go well beyond the legal case. Couple of our really significant stories of impact. The first involves a client that we were supporting in both housing and employment, and part of that process involved the necessity to have this individual's fingerprints being taken. One of our client advocates took this individual to the Atlanta Police Department conveniently to get fingerprints taken, so we could begin that housing and employment process, and discovered that this particular individual had a 25-year-old warrant that was out of Miami, Florida. So naturally, the thing that would have normally happened would have been that person being arrested on sight. However, once our advocate sort of intervened in that, we were able to have the Atlanta Police Department contact the City of Miami and discover that they had no intention of extraditing this individual for this low-level offense. But subsequent to that, because this had been an ongoing problem for this particular individual over the last 25 years of constant arrests for a low-level offense that otherwise should have been resolved years ago, our attorneys got involved in utilizing some relationships that we have in Florida, were able to negotiate through Miami's Public Defender's Office, ultimately get this individual's warrants dismissed, the case dismissed, and we moved forward with having this client proceed with getting qualified out of identification, getting this client housed, and now currently employed and doing quite well. So it's an impactful story that unfortunately, this type of situation happens often, and it takes intervention like this and dedication like this to stabilize certain individuals. Another example of that was one of our appointed cases for an immigrant client with alleged traffic offenses. Part of our intake process, we do what we call Padilla advisories, which are, if there is a potential immigration concern, then we will navigate that process with the client. And in this instance, during our due diligence, we discovered that this client had been incorrectly charged with one of these traffic offenses that could have otherwise had a deportation consequence. And so it underscores the importance, not only of the due diligence that we do in what's considered low-level cases that can have quite significant impacts on people's lives, but treating these cases as such. And so to sort of underscore this, as you see on our, by the numbers, we had 122 Padilla advisories in this last quarter. And this is also very important for our attorneys as well, because the Padilla case from the United States Supreme Court effectively says that if an attorney is not properly advising a client of any immigration concerns, then that attorney could be considered having committed malpractice. So we're very grateful to have very qualified people in our office who can identify these issues and also make these corrections for those that we served. During this last period, we also had 138 of our DUI cases closed. We still have quite a significant DUI caseload, but again, our very dedicated and well-qualified staff provides an exceptional level of representation. We had 24 individuals that we assisted at the Evolution Center, which is one of our community partners. At the Evolution Center, we conduct legal clinics twice a month, and over this past quarter, we were able to assist 24 individuals with various legal issues to, again, continue to help them become stabilized, housed, and employed. Also very proud of, I think, in our last public safety presentation, we spoke about our work with Atlanta House Proud. In this past quarter, we were able to have 11 individuals assisted in various housing situations, most of which were code enforcement-related, but that is also proactive work that we are doing. And so when we do this proactive assistance to individuals, what we're technically doing is saving the city, and more specifically, the taxpayers, tens of thousands of dollars when you think about 11 people, just 11 people cycling through the judicial process, not to mentioning the, us alleviating a lot of the anxiety that can come with a citation. And this usually is against legacy residents, so we want to make sure that we continue to do this good work, but I also wanted to make sure that we highlighted this during this presentation. Of course, holistic outreach is a very large part of what we do as an office. I'm constantly saying that prevention is less, much less expensive than punishment. And over the last quarter, our department has been a primary partner at 25 events that we either held ourselves or were a partner in. And within those 25 events, there were approximately 3,400 attendees that came to those events, and that resulted in about 2,000, a little bit over 2,000 interactions with our staff, delivering some form of service to those individuals. And again, we actually have 100% staff participation in our outreach, so it's to be commended, our staff is to be commended for that. Two weeks ago, the National Legal Aid and Defender Association held its annual conference here in Atlanta. NLADA is the largest and oldest nonprofit supporting public defense and civil legal aid in the nation. Our office was somewhat instrumental in bringing that conference to Atlanta, and in so doing, we were very, very active participants this year. Both our client advocate and social work staff, as you can see on that top-left picture, actually put on a session that they hosted, speaking on the delivery of holistic services that utilized our department's model. And I actually personally served as a moderator for three additional sessions and was fortunate enough and to be able to give the opening welcome to about 600 attendees at this year's annual conference. So having this conference is really a big deal. It highlights and promotes not only our city, but also our department and also the local civil aid offices that exist in the metro area. But us as a leader in this resourcing and operating space, because even though, you know, misdemeanors are associated with this municipal court, we are in an unusual position and often looked at as sort of the subject matter expertise when it comes to low-level offense operations. And we were certainly able to highlight that, this past convening of the annual conference. So again, we want to commend our office and all those participants. NLADA actually sent us a thank you video, so I'd like to play that. This is from the president and CEO of the organization, I guess. The video, it's not, is there something I can do from here? It didn't overlay. Well, it was a very nice message. I think you all would have been very impressed by it. Well, with that, I will take any questions that you may have.
Well, please email us that file.
We will, we will.
Latoya, will you please make sure we get that via email? Thank you. Do we have any questions from the body? The Honorable Michael Julian Bond?
Well, I just want to, again, thank you for the good work that you do, Mr. Day, and I don't really have a question, I just want to compliment you on what you're doing. And I apologize to tell my eyes are dilated, I'm not just cool, my eyes are dilated. So that was a joke. But, no, I'd like to ask you, if you could elaborate on a function that you do, I ask you this all the time, about helping people with, giving them advice around evictions. I literally just referred somebody to your office this morning.
Okay, well, I'll make sure I follow up on that. What we have been doing is, again, sort of strengthening some of the relationships that we have with some of the service partners, the other civil legal aid providers in the area that primarily do that. Our focus has mostly been on treating that as, because it is sort of an ancillary thing that comes, the baggage, some of the baggage that comes with the clients we serve. And so we have a couple of people in our office that are already trained in that area, have some experience in representing individuals and sort of landlord tenant disputes. And what we see as the biggest benefit is our ability to kind of go in, have a conversation upfront, and that usually alleviates the issue. In the past, the biggest issue for us was being primarily under-resourced for that, because when you do receive those calls and you do have clients that have that issue, and it's very common, trying to navigate that and pair them up with an attorney to give that one-on-one service has been kind of difficult. We're in the process and have been in the process this past year with increasing the number of attorneys in our office, and so while the number of those advisings have not changed, and it still seems to be increasing, our ability to handle it has certainly changed. So we're doing a much better job of sort of answering that call quicker.
All right, well, great, thank you.
So appreciative, we're very appreciative to you guys for, you know, of course sponsoring and approving our budget being increased to be able to have those extra hands on deck to be able to service, you know, that critical need.
Well, thank you for that, and I really just appreciate all that you're doing beyond just with being, having two feet in the courtroom.
Right, right.
Being expansive, you know, reaching beyond the walls of the court and, you know, just being a better, a more able resource for the rest of the community, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And now we will see a short video. That was a wonderful message. Thank you so much. Wonderful report. Do we have any other questions or concerns? Well done, thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will get a motion to adopt the agenda. Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. The agenda has been adopted.
And we have a motion to approve the minutes. Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. The minutes have been approved. This takes us to our Consent Agenda Section G, Communications, Item Number 1, 24C 5142. A communication from Tony Roberts, Executive Director and CEO of the Atlanta Bar Association, submitting the appointment of Ms. Andrea Bilbija to serve as a member of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. This appointment's for a term of three years.
Is Ms. Andrea here today?
Madam Chair, the appointee has a schedule conflict and is unable to attend the meeting, so the recommendation is to hold this item.
Motion to hold by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable, I will second it, thank you. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Foyers, zero nays. This item is held in committee. Item Number 2, 24C 5143. A communication from Mayor Andre Dickens, appointing Mr. Jim Wright to serve as a member of the Atlanta Citizen Review Board. This appointment's for a term of three years.
Is Mr. Jim Wright here today? Mr. Wright, please come forward and tell us why you would like to serve on this very important board for the City of Atlanta, the Atlanta Citizens Review Board. Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, distinguished members of our city council. Thank you for what you do for us. Probably 18 months ago, I had the opportunity to spend time with Lee Reed as Lee was doing an outreach activity in the community. I live in the Old Fourth Ward, and we were actually doing park cleanup together, so got an opportunity to meet Lee and understand what he does and what his function does. And our relationship has continued since that point in time. I was impressed by what the organization does, what the committee does. I think I have the skills and the background that would add to that, or at least make me a meaningful contributor to that committee, and I would be happy to summarize those. But on the other hand, hopefully you've had an opportunity to see the resume or the mayor's office has that I submitted in support of my nomination, so. So I got here with the thought in mind, and it's kind of a tired expression, but we all talk about giving back to the community, doing things in the way of public service. I have done that. I've done that since I retired about 13 years ago. I was mayor of a city in North Carolina, probably, community is probably better than city, but served as a mayor, served as a guardian of light, I'm served on several nonprofit boards there before relocating back to Atlanta about three years ago.
Seconded by the motion by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Thank you very much for your attention.
Madam Chair, that takes us to Section H, to our favorable and unfavorable claims.
I will make a motion to approve the favorable claims 1 through 9. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The favorable claims have been approved.
I will make a motion to adverse the unfavorable claims 10 through 54. Seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. The unfavorable claims have been adverse. This takes us to our Regular Agenda Section I, ordinance for second reading. Item Number 1, 24O 1600, and ordered by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor as designated on behalf of the City of Atlanta and the Department of Parks and Recreation to retroactively reinstate agreement listed herein on call post-certified officers with Cloverhurst Air and Joint Venture to enter into the first renewal option for one year commencing on November 1st, 2024, and ending on October 31st, 2025, in the amount not to exceed $1,500,000.00 to continue providing security needs at the various parks and recreational sites. To waive all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, to ratify all actions taken by or on behalf of the city since the date of expiration of the agreement and for the purposes.
I will move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Three yeas, zero nays, one abstention. This item is favorable.
Honorable Michael Julian Bond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to explain my vote. It had come to my attention that folks in the, in some portions of the community were alleging that I had a conflict of interest with this particular item. I spoke with our ethics officer this morning and the law department, and both have opined that I do not have a conflict of interest in any way, shape, or form with this contract. But in deference to what I was told by the ethics officer, she said if I just wanted to be extra legal, extra careful, I should just go ahead and abstain. And so that's what I did. But I just wanted on the record that I have no conflict of interest and want to make sure that folks who are out there trying to represent that wherever they are, that is not the case and not accurate.
Next item, Mr. Johnson?
Item Number 3, 24O 1633, and ordered by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, amending the 2025. Excuse me. Item Number 2, 24O 1632, and ordered by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the mayor or his designated to enter into Amendment Number 3 for agreement listed herein, body camera, police equipment, and services with Exxon Enterprise Incorporated on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department to add the Department of Parks and Recreation as authorized users, to list funding streams for authorized users, and to add additional funding to the annual contract in the amount not to exceed $790,781.33. All contract award will be charged to and paid from the fund, department, organization, and account numbers listed herein and for other purposes.
Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item Number 3, 24O 1633, and ordered by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, amending the 2025 intergovernmental grant fund budget on behalf of the Atlanta Police Department by adding to anticipations and appropriations an amount of $699,539.00 for the Bureau of Justice Assistance FY 2024 Local Law Enforcement Crime Gun Intelligence Center Integration Initiative Grant from the United States Department of Justice to respond to gun crimes and for other purposes.
Moved by the Honorable Dustin Hillis, seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item Number 4, 24O 1634, and ordered by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, amending the 2025 intergovernmental grant fund budget, Department of Police, by adding to anticipations and appropriations, an amount of $47,334.24 for the 2025 Highway Enforcement of Aggressive Traffic Grant from the Governor's Office of Highway Safety and for other purposes.
Moved by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Seconded by the Honorable Antonio Lewis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. Will everyone please vote? The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Item Number 5, 24O 1655, and ordered by Councilmember Andrea L. Boone, authorizing the mayor or his designated to waive Chapter 2, Article 10, Division 4 of the Bureaucurial and Real Estate Code of the City of Atlanta, Code of Ordinances, insofar as it shall be necessary to authorize the actions authorized hereby to enter into Amendment Number 5 for agreement listed herein citywide, clean and close services with Escuse Construction and Home Inspection LLC on behalf of the Atlanta Department of Police Code Enforcement Section to extend the term of the agreement on a month-to-month basis for a term of one year effective from December 16, 2024 through December 15, 2025, an amount not to exceed $1,400,000.00. All contract award will be charged to and paid from the council listed below and for other purposes.
We have Director Tally here.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Daphne Tally, Director of the Atlanta Police Department Code Enforcement Section. The purpose of the legislation is to allow us to continue our services until we have a new contract in place.
Moved by the Honorable Antonio Lewis, seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable.
Thank you.
This takes us to Item Number 6, 24O 1673, and ordered by Councilmember Matt Westmoreland to amend the City of Atlanta Code of Ordinances so as to insert the words criminal history status in various code sections referencing nondiscrimination and listing the basis upon which discrimination is prohibited and for other purposes. Madam Chair, the sponsor requests that this item be held.
Motion to hold by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis, seconded by myself. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is held in committee. This takes us to Section J Resolutions. Madam Chair, can we take Items Number 7 through 11 together as a block? These are all for settlement legislation.
Please proceed.
Item Number 7, 24R 4596, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Angela A. Perez versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County, State of Georgia, in the amount of $20,000.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes. Item Number 8, 24R 4597, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement amount of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Daniel Fickling versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County, in the amount of $12,500.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes. Item Number 9, 24R 4598, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against the defendant, City of Atlanta, in the case of Jacinta Whitehead versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County, Georgia, in the amount of $8,500.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the council listed herein, authorizing the chief financial officer to distribute the settlement amount and for other purposes. Item Number 10, 24R 4599, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of Norma Gutierrez Armenta Guido versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $10,000.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes. Item Number 11, 24R 4600, a resolution by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee, authorizing the settlement of all claims against the City of Atlanta in the case of State Farm Mutual Automobile Insurance Company, Essebrogi of Maradona, Aaron, versus City of Atlanta Civil Action File Number listed herein pending in the State Court of Fulton County in the amount of $5,500.00, authorizing the settlement amount to be charged to and paid from the council listed herein and for other purposes.
Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Vice Chair Dustin Hillis. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Madam Chair, we have one item coming off held. Item Number 24. May I sound the caption in?
Please proceed.
Item Number 24, 24O 1607, and ordered by Councilmember Byron D. Amis as amended by Public Safety and Legal Administration Committee to delineate and designate in a connection with the 2025 College Football Playoff Quarterfinal Chick-fil-A Peach Bowl and the 2025 College Football Playoff National Championship Entertainment Events, a certain area of downtown Atlanta as a temporary public entertainment district between the dates of December 26, 2024 through January 24, 2025, to prohibit distribution of free commercial products within the designated area, to prohibit cruising in the designated area and for other purposes.
We have Mr. Felipe here with us today.
Yes, ma'am. How are you, ma'am?
Great. Please explain.
Yes, this is the same thing that the City of Atlanta did back in 2018 and 2019. In 2020, the first one for the college football, the first one, the second one for Super Bowl and for Final Four that never took place, but basically is to establish the public entertainment district to support the college football, the Chick-fil-A quarterfinals game following during a five-day, during a seven-day window and following another seven-day window to support the college football national championship to prevent what is called guerrilla advertising, the cruising around the areas to prevent any issues with pedestrian fatalities and accidents and things like that.
Any questions from the body? Move approval. Seconded by the Honorable Michael Julian Bond. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. The vote is closed. Four yeas, zero nays. This item is favorable. Madam Chair, that concludes our legislative items for this afternoon.
Do we have any announcements from members of the body? Questions, concerns? The Honorable Michael Julian Bond?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is not a public safety announcement per se, but on tomorrow, Tuesday, November 26th, at 2:00 PM, we will be having our HelloFresh Thanksgiving version at the Coen Recreation Center at, looks like, 1530 Woodbine Avenue in southeast, in East Atlanta at 303 17 at 2:00 PM. We'll be distributing not only our regular HelloFresh allotment with Second Help-ins Atlanta, but also a Thanksgiving box that will include a turkey and some collard greens and some other items. And of course, like always, it's first come, first served. You don't have to register, but it does go quick. So I would suggest people get there, please be on time. And want to thank the many volunteers who are going to help us out tomorrow, APD, the Atlanta Corrections Department, the Office of the City Solicitor, the Watershed Department, and of course, Atlanta Fire and Rescue, and many, many other volunteers who are not affiliated with the city, almost 30 in a round number that show up every week that come out to help us. And so we're doing it tomorrow, Tuesday, as opposed to Wednesday, because people need to prepare for Thanksgiving on Wednesday. And so we hope to see you all there tomorrow.
Turkey's tomorrow, Coen Park, 2:00 PM. First come, first served. Thank you, Councilmember Michael Julian Bond. This meeting is adjourned.